Like to call this meeting to order pursuant Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting. First up, public comment. Kathy, what do we have going on?
February, the Lee Youth Commission, our February activities only happened for one day out of the whole temperatures were too cold, even though we did get a heater that was, that we borrowed from Kelly's funeral home. Mike Kelly was very generous in bringing it down so that we could be warm. But again, the temperatures were too low, too quick to get frostbite. So we said, no, we best not do it now. Chair, we're planning winter activities. We're going to make sure we have an indoor spot so that we our chairperson here, Buck Donovan, did an outstanding job informing the select board about the planning board and what you do and answered any questions that they had. It was very, very informative. The other thing was the forum. That was spectacular. So many people there. It was wonderful. So much information. There were five different stations. Each station had a recorder and a moderator. Were written down and it just, the response was wonderful. And our categories, the strengths of the town of Lee, the weaknesses in the opportunities in the town and the threat. Surveys are coming in great. At the time of the forum, we had over 300 surveys that were completed. Places around town where you can, if you can't get on the internet to do the survey, one of the places is the Lee Library. Now it's our job to put all this information together and present it as part of our plan for the best.
Thank you, Kathy. All the work you do around town. Oh, anybody online? Any comments? Virtual? None? Going on to discussion, Lee signed permits? You sleep package, I see a new sign out there. The Sitco Station, yep.
This will be the triangle.
Yeah. Oh, yeah. Look at, yeah, it was denied. Yep.
He just said he had a new sign.
Yeah, I think I, didn't I see a new sign out there on the side?
Couldn't tell you.
I thought I saw a new sign, so. I'm sure Matt's on that because he denied this one. Existing signage in addition to this would exceed allowable. So, yeah, it's too much. Sitco was issued.
Any taxes to be paid?
The taxes. The taxes have to be paid.
Once settled, this application will be issued. Interesting. I like, yeah, this is good. I mean, it actually tells what's going on.
I liked it.
Yep. If you read it. Then we have one up the premium outlets and that was, looks like it was issued. No outstanding issues. Yeah, this is a nice little action report. Okay. Next, we have a update on the master plan. I believe Peter's on vacation, right? So he's not here, but Kathy touched on it and the, the public forum was really outstanding. Peg, you were there also. Dave, you were there. Conrad was there. Everybody was there. You guys know it was just really, I was really impressed how enthusiastic. Lot of faces I did not know, which was good that live.
Actually, I felt the same way. There were so many people there that must be newer. And see, the group, well, you were, I came a little bit, I did have to come late. I will say, Buck, you were answering the questions about the marijuana. I thought you did a really good job explaining about one business might have many permits. Some people were
Yeah.
The marijuana was, some people did not.
You were here when we did it, yeah.
I know, I was. And I think what people don't understand is when you have a townwide vote and it comes over 50%. I think ours was 52. I'm not sure exactly of that. That they could come next door to my house or your house or any place if we didn't have places outlined in the bylaws. And Massachusetts is pretty strict about that. And I thought Buck did a really good job in the group I was in answering the questions because a couple of them came up and
It's interesting. The cannabis industry is, one group thought it was a very big threat to the to the town. Then other ones, we, you know, we see it as a benefit, but it needs to be a controlled industry.
Right.
Just like everything. It, I thought it was really good. Finally, we're past woeing about the paper mills. We've been 10 years out, 13 years out now, and the last, you know, 10 of it have been oh, the paper, what are we going to do? What are we going to do? Now everybody's so past it. We're looking where we are next. It's really, it's good, refreshing. Yep.
Right.
I'm surprised by the turnout. There's quite a few people there.
There were.
You know, you, then you brought up that there were some new faces, but when they asked people how many years they lived in town, majority of them were like 30 to 40 years.
They were 20. They never got to the 30 because I was, us four here, we're all at 30 plus.
But it was, it just showed you, we, you know, we had maybe new faces.
Yeah.
New faces that, you know, they've been here long term. They finally come out and that's excellent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they, you know, maybe we're a little more welcoming. It was definitely on meeting when you had that old guard, that was pretty intimidating back then. Those guys were something else.
I kind of think it was too. I mean, even though I was pretty active.
But, but now we, we look for them to like, hey, where, where do we go?
I know. But it'll be good as long as we're controlled.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, it's funny, they're, well, everybody knows one of, the 102 growth facility is having
Yeah.
odor issues and it's in our bylaws and their site plan and their special permit that that stuff's supposed to be controlled. If they can't control it, then.
There are remedies.
Yeah.
In the code, there is remedies.
Yes. Yep.
And it does, you know, I had, shouldn't say this, but last summer I had someone on my porch and they said, do you have a dead animal under your porch? I said, geez, I don't think so. Come to find out. If the wind hits it correctly, it can go.
Smells like a dead animal?
It was not, well, you know how, whatever.
Somebody smoking, somebody smoking in the park, park out here?
Yeah, there's that too.
No, they're pretty pulling that, not her. They wouldn't, I mean, it's anyways, it, it is an issue. It is an issue and we do have stuff in our bylaws and hopefully it'll be corrected.
Yeah, I think they're, they're, they're very PR oriented. They don't want bad publicity.
I hope not.
Didn't they have trouble with a growth facility in New Hampshire? Same thing. They had the carbon filters, still got the strong smell. They had to do something else, but they did find a cure.
Did they? Yeah. Be looking at that solution then. Yep. Okay, moving on. Discussion zoning amendments. Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, jeez. I didn't see you. Hey, Gordon, sorry, I didn't see you there. You with us now, Gordon?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Didn't see you. We were just discussing a little bit of the master plan and other stuff. We're moving on now. Zoning amendments. Peter and Conrad drafted accessory dwelling units. Conrad, do we, without Peter here, do we want to talk on this or do we want to just hold off on it, you guys think?
I think we're through the different track changes. I think we got it to a point where get some discussion on how we are. I guess probably here is you thinking you want to get this on for this warrant, this town meeting.
Uh, if it goes well, I don't want to rush it though. There's no reason to rush it.
The short-term rentals, that's, that's a big one.
That could be a bigger one, yeah.
I'm not going to have that one ready for sure.
I don't think so. This one could.
If you want to go through this quickly, I mean, we could.
We could take over, you know, we could take a look at it.
Pretty, pretty short. It's pretty short. I mean, it's nothing too complicated, I don't think.
Provide homeowners with a means of obtaining rental income, companionship, security and personal services, thereby to enable homeowners to stay more comfortably in homes and neighborhoods they might otherwise be forced to leave. Second, add moderately priced rental units to the housing stock to meet the needs of smaller households and make housing units available to moderate income households that might otherwise have difficulty finding housing. Develop housing units in residential neighborhoods that are appropriate for households at a variety of life stages and for the persons and disabilities and protect property values and the character of the town's residential neighborhoods.
So if we could just take number four, just quickly. When we start reviewing some of the other ordinances around the county. Lennox, I believe, and Stockbridge, I believe, they have provisions in theirs whereby central character of the neighborhood by ensuring that the ADUs are installed only in owner occupied houses. Now, that implies that you own the house, you want to put a accessory dwelling unit in your backyard, it has to be an owner occupied. That's the only way we can do it is if you have an owner occupied. Some of the towns didn't have it. Lennox and Stockbridge did. They also have provisions where not only does it have to be owner occupied, you have to file an affidavit recorded with the registry of deeds to be sure that's, that's what's happening before you get the permits issued. The issue later on is 10 years later, you decide you want to sell your house. You have to agree that if you, if you're going to sell the house, going to have the accessory dwelling unit still there, the only way you can continue to operate the accessory dwelling unit is if the new owner is same property and then they have to agree to it and then you have to file it with the registry of deeds, an affidavit that the, that the new buyer is going to agree to that. Peter and I kind of had a problem with that.
I, where, where am I finding that in here?
It's not, it's not.
We took it out.
Took it out. I
It's a question that's got to be raised.
I do like that and, and I think if you build an accessory dwelling unit on your property, that is part of the property. They, they should get sold. You can't split them. They always would, yeah.
Oh, no. The, the two dwelling units on this singular lot will still be maintained. The caveat with this is, is accessory dwelling unit and operate it as such, the owner occupied has to be in the primary structure. Okay? Then if you go to sell it, it's like it's an encumbrance on the property, but whoever's the new buyer is going to be, this could be relegated to making sure that the primary, you're going to be in a new owner of the property and the only way that's going to keep that permit, the accessory dwelling unit continuing.
I think I got to agree with that because if you don't, then you're going to have, you're going to have rental properties.
Right.
That's what they
Again, the intent here is to increase the number of housing, you know, housing stock and that's you know, again, Peter and I, we're kind of debating it. Maybe the, maybe the way to do it is in order to get the accessory dwelling unit now through permitting, takes off the permit, if he, he or the estate later on decides to sell it, then, you know, that, that just goes away.
But you'd still have a dwelling there.
Mike, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. You're
What do you got, Peg?
I was just going to say, that may make the property more valuable to abide, abide. Because I would say that when we sold our house on Husaton Street, Gil had renovated the barn and the person probably wouldn't have bought your big old house.
So you guys sold. Are they owner occupied over there?
Yes, they are. Yeah, they are. And they do very well with that. I mean, as far, I mean, I'm not, but they've done very well with it. I feel too, if you're owner occupied and you have an accessory dwelling, most likely you'd want to take care of it or monitor it and make sure it wasn't just the term a party house or something. Those are just my feelings and I might be, you know.
Well, what's, I mean, they call them, is the in-law. It's like an in-law apartment.
It is an in-law apartment.
Or a guest house, yes.
Yes, yes.
I mean, you're living there and folks
Right.
are getting rid of their house, they're downsizing and you want to have them nearby, this is an excellent way to do it. It's another thing when you had just come out of college and he's trying to come back into the area and it gives him the opportunity to, I mean, there's a lot of benefits.
Yeah, there really are. I, that's just my opinion.
You're on the board, so that is, your opinion's going to weigh, so.
You know.
Don't say it's just your opinion. It's going to weigh in.
I just want to give you the thoughts that we had internally, how was the involved.
Yeah, and I, yeah, okay. That's enough.
Dave? Thoughts on that one?
Yeah, if we had a lot that meets lot size, road frontage. To me, I, I don't know why we don't deal as a duplex. I mean, we don't make owners love owner occupied in duplexes. This is something, it's set up originally to help the elderly person, whatever, in their property, but I don't know if I want to lock people out from, uh, rent boat.
It's a good point. It's, it's like a duplex, but it's separated.
But it's separated.
So it's going to be
It's an accessory dwelling.
That's what, only thing. You all right there, Matt?
I'm good.
You're popping up. Okay. Matt, your thoughts on this one, this part of it?
I kind of, in the middle here, I, I, I kind of like the idea of owner occupied to protect the neighborhood kind of thing. You know, but Dave Forrest makes a good point that we allow two families in there and so do we really necessarily need to monitor? We're just trying to gain housing, but from a neighborhood standpoint, from a neighborhood point of view, I like the owner occupied. I just don't know if it should stay with the property. Maybe origi, maybe originally is a good thing and then after that. I don't know. I, I've got to do some thinking on that. I mean, we could always change it if it wasn't working out, right? Or I guess we could always
It's not in there yet. Right? It's not in here.
No.
It's not here yet, no.
No, it's not, it's not in here yet. We were, that's just one thing that they were all talking about.
Of the four towns, two towns had it, the other two towns didn't, by example.
You all set, Matt?
I got, yeah, yeah, we allow to, I mean, I'd be okay either, either way, but I'd have, definitely have to think a little bit more about it.
Yeah, we, we don't require it for duplexes, so that's, or any other apartments.
Exactly.
That's a thought.
Yeah.
Gordon, Gordon, I see your hand up.
Yes, sir. Thank you. It's a great conversation and I, I look at it from my history as an enforcement issue. How would I handle all this as an enforcement person? And it, because right now you're building, your building official is also the enforcement official. And I do know a lot about Great Barrington's bylaw, Lennox's, North Adams, Pittsfield, a lot of things that are going on right now. Some things to think about without telling you how I feel about it, but things you think about. Right now you have in the R districts, in the residential districts, you pretty much have a permit by right for two family dwellings. Now, two family dwellings, as member Forrest brought up, you know, it's a duplex. Each side has to have two exits. Each side has to have a separate fire alarm system. Each, you know, there's requirements in for each one of these two. Great Barrington's accessory dwelling unit by law assumed that the accessory dwelling unit would be in the main building, not a separate building. So, and it also, under the building code, needs to meet the two exits requirement and separated fire alarms. So you can't get around that by a bylaw that just calls it a dwelling, accessory dwelling unit. It's going to be a two-family home and it'll have obligations under the state building code. The issue of a second unit separate from the primary as being allowed, you need to be very careful about your definitions. And if you want a, right now, the town lead bylaw doesn't allow a separate second residential building on a lot to be considered a two-family lot. It has to be connected and the courts have come up with what that means. Connected. And I can talk to you about that separately or I can talk to your subcommittee, you know, about that. So
That's what we're trying to, that's what we're trying, trying to alleviate here, right?
Yes, and, and as I said, I'm not, I'm just bringing some information to your table for you to think about with your subcommittee before you bring this before the town, because these are the kind of questions that are going to be asked. So if you have a second dwelling unit not attached, if you is, and that's by special permit. If that's what you're, I assume that's what you're considering, that it's by special permit, an accessory dwelling unit that's not attached to the main. Because in Great Barrington, even though they have zones that allow two-family homes by right, they have some zones, unlike Lee, that require a special permit, even for a two-family that's, that's on the same lot, in one building, you need a special permit. But if you meet the accessory dwelling unit standard, which is carve a section out of your main house that's 600 square feet or less, then they allow that by right. But if it's larger than 600 square feet, they would call it a two-family home, you know, I'm just saying there's a lot of things to think about as you determine what language you want to bring. What's that?
Already allow for a two-family home.
Yes, exactly. See, but, but in Great Barrington, they don't allow it without a special permit in some places. But our zoning is very lenient, I think. It definitely, and no problem, it definitely allows a two-family, but it has to be in the same building. So you need to make sure that you differentiate an accessory dwelling unit that's part of one building versus a separated, non-connected accessory dwelling unit.
You want to hear the definition that we have?
Sure, that would be helpful. Thank you. Because I haven't seen any of this, Buck. I'm sorry. I haven't seen it.
Right. So our definition, under definitions, primary dwelling unit, the primary dwelling unit of which the ADU is a part of, or if attached, the single-family dwelling on the lot on which the ADU is located. Definition two, accessory dwelling unit. An accessory dwelling unit is a self-contained housing unit that is either physically attached to a single-family dwelling or detached from that dwelling, either newly constructed or a conversion of an existing, existing accessory structure and is located on the same lot.
Well, that, that doesn't allow for someone to, oh, go ahead, sorry.
This is just our first draft, so I'm looking at that and I'm I, I see as an ADU as a self-contained, separate.
Sure. So what I don't see is what if I want, I have a home and I have enough land to meet the two-family requirement in our zoning bylaw, because I'm served by water and sewer. So I get to reduce my square footage and all that. What if I want to create a new second building? And rent it out as an accessory dwelling unit? That is not accommodated by your definition. You're only talking about renovating an existing structure.
No, no, we don't. Or, or an existing structure.
Right, right. But, but it doesn't say, or a new structure. That's constructed for
Either newly, either that dwelling, either newly constructed or a conversion of an existing accessory structure.
I didn't, I didn't hear that, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm sorry. I guess I missed it when you were reading it because my concern was, you know, and I don't have a, I'm not necessarily saying I have a problem. I'm just, I'm looking at it from the enforcement point of view. You know, as a, as a zoning enforcer, you have to be very careful what language you're enforcing and what your concepts are. So if you want to allow any, so accessory dwelling unit, are you going to go to the table of dimensional requirements and require a lot to have, if they want an accessory dwelling unit, will, because it's a second home basically, will they need to meet the dimensional requirements for a lot size of a two-family home? You know, we need to just be clear because you are allowed some deductions if you have town water and you're allowed more if you have town sewer, up to 50%, which is pretty, I mean, compared to other bylaws, that's pretty good. But are, you know, you need to make sure you incorporate language on how you want that to be looked at by the enforcement, zoning enforcement people before they issue a permit. Just make sure that maybe you even want to make that part of your proposal, is that they need to meet the square footage in that zone for a two-family home? Because that's basically what you got. You got two families. With the cars and the kids and everything else that comes with two families. I just think, don't miss that section, that's all, because your zoning enforcement people will have a hard time knowing whether or not they should consider two-family lot or an accessory dwelling lot. Make sure you incorporate that somehow in your language.
Yep.
Does that make any sense?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, okay. As long as you understand where I'm going, that's all. I mean, it's, it's about the enforcement. Whether or not this gets passed is a separate issue, but I think we need to make sure that the enforcement of this bylaw is, is, is there, you know, because otherwise, you know, when it's so much gray, it's hard to enforce. You need to have a black and white on, for the enforcement people.
The draft that we're using right now, Gordon, is, it's basically, the ADU would be allowed by right as long as it met the, the bulk regulations in your, in your, in your code. For that, the segment requirements, lot area requirements, it'd be it'd be subject to a by right use, subject to planning board review. If it's a accessory structure or a new structure, it's not going to comply, then it would have to be under a special permit by planning board. Say, for example, if you had a garage, you want to convert it to a accessory dwelling unit and it didn't, it wasn't a compliant structure, then that would subject it to special permit planning board. If the garage was compliant with zoning right now, then that would just, just use a site plan approval by the planning board as a by right use, not a special permitted use. That's, again, this is first draft, so this is
Sure, sure. So, Mr. Chair, so, Mr. Chairman, not to interrupt, but does that mean that if I have, when you if I have, when you say it's non-compliant, does that mean with side sets, or do you mean square footage on the lot?
I would say pre-existing, non-conforming, right?
That, that would be a whole different issue, and they, they would need a special permit.
That's, that's the way we're crafted right now.
Yeah, okay. No, I, I'm just trying to make sure as an enforcement person, I understand what my obligation would be. In plan review, before I issued a permit, you know, I, in some ways, a detached accessory unit, it's way easier to look at, because it automatically would have separated fire alarm systems, separated exits, and that, that's actually easier to review than it is when somebody culls out a square footage within a building. So are, if you're having this accessory dwelling unit within a single building, is there a minimum or maximum square footage? I would think if it's accessory, it would at least have to be defined that it's less than half of the square footage of the main house, or it becomes the, the main, um, not the accessory. So I don't know how you, have you addressed that at all about square footages?
It is in here, yes.
Great, thank you. I, I, again, I don't mean to be a pain in the butt, but I have not seen this at all, and I'd love to see it uh, before the town meeting, so I can, you know, at least support it, at least.
We, uh, we did uh, say square footage, I think, for um, up to a, a thousand square feet. But, but I actually was gonna say that, I almost think that might be too uh, large, or maybe like Gordon's suggestion of making it comparable to the house that's already there.
You could put a little clause in the end of it, shall up to a thousand and shall not exceed uh, size of um, primary house.
Well, I, I should say, maybe like, like Gordon mentioned, it's a, it's a good point, cause I was thinking, I wouldn't wanna see this big accessory dwelling on, you know, if you've got, say, a fifteen-hundred square foot house, and they were able to put another thousand, yeah, I don't know, that might seem overkill. So maybe we, you know, our intention, I think, was making it so that someone who's got a garage or a little adjacent building could really use that o- option to convert it. But maybe, maybe it's a good idea to, to reference the, a percentage of the existing dwelling.
Like a two-bedroom, seven hundred five hundred, around eight fifty to eleven hundred feet, more or less, for a, for a two-bedroom.
Usually two-bedroom, yeah. That's, that's why we're, I, I mean, we had thrown out the thousand square foot. Did you um, you sent that to Gordon?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't see that. Um, but, Mr. Chairman, so if I have a, a house and I have a large barn, which can happen in the Berkshires, and especially in Lee, uh, with so many farm buildings, you know, or, or because you say it can be new, do I get to build a two-thousand square foot barn? You know, one thousand per floor, I'm just saying. Okay, so you're, you're definitely limiting it to a thousand, cause otherwise I can see somebody getting some big wonderful thing to rent out as a short-term rental, not as, and that's part of the housing problem we have, is that so many people are using short-term rentals and buying up houses for that instead of renting long-term, you know, to, maybe the accessory dwelling unit should be a long-term rental issue and not a short-term rental. Just a thought.
I think that, that's another, that's another issue, but I, I, I think it's more of an issue in, in people's minds sometimes than an actual issue.
Well, I know a lot of houses that were bought up and they're being short-term rentals, uh, you know, there's a couple, I mean, there's many that I know of, that basically take, take, well, but you, they blend together, Mr. Chairman. It's all this, you, you have to kind of wrap them all up in the same thought process. You know, maybe there needs to be some kind of note.
Sorry to interrupt, Gordon, but we do have a provision, we have a provision in there that says um, right now, well, and it's not in this copy, but we could put it in there that it's uh, has to be owner occupied.
Well, it, it's, the main building does, but it's the accessory unit. You know, does that have to be occupied for more than thirty days, you know, which, which would be a long-term rental thing, rather than a weekend rental or a two-day rental on a weekend?
I think, I think we have to handle that under our short-term rental by law, and to see how restrictive we wanna be. But I don't, I think we have to treat them as two different, knowing that it could possibly be short-term rental if we're not restrictive enough, I guess.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I believe that you need to tie them together now. I, I don't think you can wait. I think you need to be very cautious on how you word this. And um, if, you know, by making a stance now, then when you do your short-term rental, which I, we, we are gonna need to do, everybody's doing it, so we're gonna need to do it. Um, but by the time you get to short-term rental, if this goes through first, it's gonna set the guidelines. And I think that, because everybody in the brother's gonna try and update their garage to rent out on the weekends, is that what we want if we want housing? Housing is long-term, it's not a weekend. You know, wh- what are you trying to get at? Maybe talk to the master plan people about this. What are we trying to get at with this, this kind of bylaw? Long-term housing or weekend housing? Just a thought.
I guess both in a way.
Yeah, it's in our, it's in our purpose and intent, a little of both.
Oh, yeah, well, if that's, if that's what you want, then, you know, that'll be the discussion at town meeting.
I mean, we don't wanna limit.
Gordon, I'll give you an example right now. I got an apartment that I short-term rent, and if I did not short-term rent, I would not long-term rent. So that's how it is.
Yeah, and I understand.
So I'm not, I'm not taking anything off, off the housing market, I just wouldn't do it, cause I don't want people in there all the time. I want them in there when I want them in there. So there's a lot of people that do that. So you're, you're, to say that, that all the STRs are taking usable rentals uh, off the market, I, I don't think is fair.
Well, no, I, I'm not saying that. What, what I think you need to consider that, you have a different situation where you have one building, you're short-term renting a part of it. The issue is, what about that separate building?
Your guesthouse, same, same.
Your guesthouse, do you want that, it, it, so you're really not concerned about housing? Um, because if you're concerned about housing for, for people who are trying to work and live in Lee, you need long-term rentals, not short-term rentals. Short-term rentals, somebody, it's basically a business. It's, it's not helping an old person keep their house. If they have a secondary external building they're renting out on the weekends, that's really a business, and they should be filing the appropriate tax documents for a business. Uh, you know, that's, that's, well, that, that could be, but I think just make sure before town meeting that you're really considering uh, the separate building, um, not in your house. I, I get it, you gotta, you're living there, you're doing short-term rentals, I get that.
Are, are, how do you accept the word, that we say that it could never be used as a short term?
No, I'm saying you wanna be, you may wanna consider it carefully, differently, under your special permit. Because, I mean, even the governor's edict right now is, she, she is pushing long-term housing. We don't have people in Lee and in the Berkshires who can live here and work at McDonald's or work in, you know, the red lightning kitchen, or, you know, that kind of service industry. We don't have the, we don't have the stock. We have the stock in the summer for people who wanna come up to Jacob's Pillow and DSO. And, you know, we have that, but aren't we gonna be concerned about where our kids are gonna live and what they can afford? When all these things are being held apart for huge money on the weekend for visitors, and that's all. I, I, I'm not trying to be object to it, I just think we need to make sure we cover it all in language.
I know, but what is the solution? Cause my thought was, it helps people get extra income.
Besides saying that, that rental, short-term rental's not allowed, I don't, I don't, I think that would be your only solution.
Nah, no, maybe part of the special permit process, like uh, you were talking about earlier, where, you know, uh, maybe you say that, you know, on change of ownership of the main building, they have to come in, review what their intention is, cause now are they gonna short-term rent the main building and the other building? Well, it's good that you at least captured that it has to be owner occupied for the main building. I think that's important, and that, that, that I would, I think you should keep. Yeah, I, I got no fix. I got no fix for any of this. I, I'm just trying to think of all the different avenues that are gonna be problematic for our town once this gets adopted. You guys are doing a great job.
Yeah, I, are we? We're the gateway to the Berkshires, aren't we also a tourism area?
Oh, absolutely.
Yes. So, besides the, besides the, the questionable independent motels in town, where do our guests stay that, that wanna come to our restaurants? Wanna come to uh, the gateway to the Berkshires, and go to Tanglewood, go to uh, Jacob's Pillow, the uh, Berkshire Playhouse.
Well, look, look at the occupancy rates, collect data on the occupant rates for all the Pittsfield Road uh, hotels. They're down, and they're gonna be down in our bed, how about our bed and breakfast in town that are legitimately authorized by our bed and breakfast section of our bylaw? You know, uh, those kind of things, owner occupied, owner run, somebody's always there.
They don't have the owner occupied.
Well, they have to have somebody on site, uh, either, that changed a few, that, when it, when it originally was formed, they had to be owner occupied. Now they get to have a, uh, well, this is all because of what happened up on Stockbridge Road. Now they get to have a manager in the building. Again, I'm not being, I, I'm not trying to be negative about this. I'm just trying to make sure we cover all these very strange gray areas that may come up. Um, and then at least we consider them, and then, you know, we do what we gotta do. But at least we need to talk about it and consider it and say, we don't like that idea, we like this idea. That's all, a- and I'll be quiet, I will not interrupt again.
Your, your comments are always welcome, Gordon, you know that.
I was just gonna say, or just ask this, um, it's making me think, um, if you have, Gordon, I hope you can, I mean, this is sort of like, and you have an accessory building that is rented, as we're talking about here. It's owner occupied, so that, the person lives here, votes here, pays taxes here, wants to rent the building, and it's a good rental, they'll stay forever. Tell you that, because I've had many renters, and the ones that are good pay the rent, they like it, they stay. I've had three renters in twenty-four years in the building on Husatonic Street after, before we sold it, we just had three. Anyways, if you and you pay taxes here, I guess, can I ask this question? Don't yell. Do you not have the right then to rent it to whom you want, if it's in the bylaws? You know what I'm saying, like?
Short-term or long-term is what you're saying?
I ca- I would rather it be long-term, because I do, I understand the housing need, but yet, I guess I'm, I just am asking that question, I'm not quite sure how I, I, I'm in, I'm.
Do you want an opinion, I mean?
Sure.
My opinion is yes.
Okay.
My opinion is.
I mean, I'm sort of in between.
Because, you know, being in the industry, I see, I see goods and bads. It's like, okay, if I wanted no hassle,
Right.
I'd do a long-term.
Right.
But then I'm locked out of my own property somewhat.
Yeah.
It's a lot, I tell you, it's a lot more work, and you're not getting rich, uh, for short-term. You're not, nobody's getting rich.
No, I understand that.
It's kind of fun, you bring people, the experiences are fun, um, you bring people into the area. Um, I just looked, our, last year we paid thirty-two hundred dollars into the Town of Lee taxes.
Yeah, no, I understand that, I'm not opposed to that.
It goes both ways, we do, I, I, I think if we do something like this, yes, we're gonna have a percentage that are gonna set it up, and they're gonna do a short-term rental. You're, we're gonna have that. Our, our spirit is that we want more housing. Either, either way, you're not gonna, I don't think you're gonna prevent it.
Be careful about talk, talking. And if it's owner occupied, you really will take care of you, I would hope you take care of the property. I don't know, I don't know. You know, I mean, I think, I got it, but again, everybody's got a different view.
We're, we're hoping with the Eagle Mill, that we get some.
We might.
It's coming.
It sounded it the other day in the paper, I almost screamed when I read it.
They just filed for, they got their building, their demo permit, so.
I heard that, it's wonderful.
Okay, um.
Let's hope.
So we were up to the, the review, review and approvals. So basically Conrad, in this, we have no, nothing needs a special permit, correct?
You need a special permit only if it's a pre-existing, non-conforming structure.
Okay.
That requires a special permit by the planning board. That's a special permit. If it's a by-right compliant setback, and there is, that requires a minor site plan approval, just a minor one.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Now, I don't need to be called on right now, but when, when you're ready, you missed my hand, so I wanna.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Your, Gordon got you flustered, I think.
Never.
I didn't mean to.
No, um, I just wanted to say that I.
Good gentleman discussion right there, I tell you.
No, Gordon brings up a lot of great points, he really does, and uh, we need to hear him now, and so it's all good. But I really, I agree with you, Mr. Chair, that we're go- we're going to have short-term rentals at these accessory dwellings. We can't control that, but we allow certain people, if they wanna rent it to their family member or have a family member there, those percentages of people will take care of that, so I, I just don't know if we can control everything. But, um, but I think.
We could.
Well.
We could if we really wanted to.
Well, we'd have to be very restrictive on the short-term, and that would take care of it, but we're, we're, we have the short-term bylaw that we're working on. We'll see where that goes, but if the board agrees to be more restrictive, then it's gonna restrict these accessory dwellings as short-term. But I'm in favor of the short-term, uh, of course, covering all the details. The only thing I was gonna suggest is maybe we do all accessory, or I'm sorry, I'm a fa- favor of the accessory dwelling, but maybe what we should do is do it all under special permit, to really have control of the neighborhood ask it, uh, neighborhood aspect. Would that be too much to ask people to come in and do a special permit, so we can really keep an eye on what we're allowing in to the neighborhoods? I don't know, just, I'm just putting it out there, I'm.
Think that would give us more, well, site plan, site plan, i- if it really push comes to shove, doesn't have much teeth, is we know, we just have, nobody's really pushed back on us. Yeah.
I mean, I mean, ma- ma- maybe a special permit's not needed, cause if they follow the building cur- we're gonna do a pre-existing, non-conforming. But, um, you know, maybe the special permit isn't, isn't needed, because they're gonna follow building code. Um, they're gonna follow our bylaws, the, the square footage, so, so maybe it's not needed, but maybe, I, I do think maybe the square footage might need to come down a little bit, or a percentage of the house, so it doesn't look like a massive accessory dwelling.
I would think it, that some language, at least not to exceed the primary dwelling, could be in there. Or not to eighty percent.
Well, I don't know, should it, should it be even more than that? I mean, shouldn't, because, or less than that? Because if you do have a two-thousand square foot house, you're gonna, you're gonna want a thousand square foot building as an accessory dwelling? What's the, what's the rash, what's the percentage that it should look like?
Um, Gordon, what do you have? Well, quick interruption, Matt?
Yeah, no, tha- thank you, no, uh, i- it's just, uh, Mr. Carlinow brought up an interesting point about something for the board to think about. Should, uh, should you broaden the number of items that would come under special permits, such as, you know, fifty percent or six hundred square feet or less is by right, but more than that, you know, based on its relationship with the main house? Uh, whether it's detached or attached, maybe that would be by special permit, you know, I mean, it.
Yeah.
Number one, mm, what I hear about most about short-term rentals is problem with, um, I, I go buy a house on Devon Road that's not in Lee, it's in Stockbridge. There are times there are eight vehicles parked in a, an area with, uh, and I also can see a lot of college kids playing volleyball. There are times there are eight vehicles parked in a, an area with uh, and I also can see a lot of college kids playing volleyball. They're up all hours of the night. Uh, you know, uh, that kind of thing is something that under a special permit could be at least considered by the planning board. So just, you know, something else to think about. Um, a- and again, it's an interesting thing. What do you have everything trigger on for special permits? Or do you just let it go by right as Conrad had mentioned, other than, you know, certain um, triggers for pre-existing non-conforming? I get that. That's an automatic. You, I don't think you can rule that out. That's automatic under another section of the bylaw, but I thought, um, Mr. Carlinow brought up some interesting points. That's all. Thank you.
So that, that is a interesting thought. Under, under a certain square footage would be by right, then over would be a special permit. Um, where, Matt, where, what comes to mind is, okay, you have a uh farmhouse, which is going to be a modest, yeah, sixteen, eighteen hundred square feet. And then you have that, so you, you limit it to fifty, fifty percent. Say fifty percent, um, say sixteen hundred, but would be an eight hundred square foot apartment. And you have a, the old barn out back, which the upper floor is probably going to be an easy thousand, twelve hundred square feet that you could
Right.
very honestly make an apartment and have no impact. Um, you, you hear what I'm saying?
I totally understand. I, uh, I think with, that's where the special permit would come into play so we can determine as a board that it fits the neighborhood and fits the existing character of the property. Um, because I totally can see a big barn being redone and exceeding the square footage, but it, you know, it's been there forever and.
We could do something. How would be um something like uh, by, by right fifty percent of primary dwelling not to exceed thousand square feet with special permit can exceed fifty percent, not to exceed one thousand square feet.
Say that again?
By right would be fifty percent of primary dwelling square footage, not to exceed one thousand.
Does, then you'd have to pay for a special.
Over fifty percent would be special permit not to exceed one thousand square foot.
So here's where I was coming from for, when we, whenever we, the board talked about accessory dwelling, we always brought up the in-law apartment in quotations, you know, and, and the existing garage that somebody wanted to convert and make a so like that was always my envision, that's what I always envisioned, somebody to gain a family member that needs to, to live on the property to help out. Uh, or an in-law that in-law apartment for a family member. Uh, also the idea that they might be able to rent it for a little extra income while they're living here in Lee. So like that's kind of how I was envisioning. I wasn't really envisioning someone having enough property to build a new thousand square foot apartment, but it's just kind of, I'm just throwing that out there. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
I think it, I, it very much could happen.
With an old barn.
Well, an old barn is, old barn is, is there, uh, that would be special permit. But yeah, I mean, I'm all, I'm all for, I think we should have some, the bigger it is, I think the more square footage. Like, like I said, like two thousand square foot home, if someone wanted to do a thousand square feet, that's pretty big additional building, half the hu- house. So I mean, part of me almost thinks, should it be, you know, thirty-five percent? I mean.
Forty, yeah, somewhere in there and then then still offer the special permit for the, the odd situation?
That's right. I think the lower number should be lower because we're, I mean, at least where I'm coming from, that's how I envisioned it, an accessory dwelling. A lot of people have garages that want to convert it.
Your basic cape is what sixteen hundred, Mr. Realtor?
Yeah, you could use that. But.
Fifty percent of that's going to be an eight hundred. What's, what's thirty-five percent?
Five sixty.
That's an almost in the tiny home range.
Yeah.
It's a one bedroom.
It's a one bedroom, true. Okay, thirty-five percent?
I mean, I'm fine with forty percent, you know, if, if that's.
Gordon?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Um, the, the other thing to clarify, um, not to throw more kinks into this, but again, as an enforcement person, are we talking about aggregate square footage of a home? Including a basement or not a basement or, you know, I know Buck, I'm sorry to do this, but it's again, it's my enforcement mentality. Are we talking about, you know, the aggregate? So if you have a, you know, thirty by forty square foot four floor plan, which is twelve hundred square feet, but if it's two floors and a basement, that's thirty-six hundred square feet. You know, so, so just think about whether you want it to be aggregate or bird's eye view, um, as you deal with the um, square footage and the percentage of the square footage. That's.
Point, good point.
It, it is something that's gonna it's gonna come up for the, it's gonna come up for it, whether habitable would be the word, not livable. Because you might have a, a cape with a second floor, but maybe only half of it is habitable, therefore it's the main floor, half of the second floor. Gee, do they have a walkout basement where they have a totally finished basement? That adds to the aggregate square footage. Again, I'm not trying to, I, I am not against any of this. I'm just trying to bring up, gee, if I was the enforcement agent, what would my problems be in reading this and in trying to enforce it?
I'm, I'm for the, I'm for the bird's eye view because if you look at a building that's thirty by forty, I think we want to go by footprint of the whole lot. I, I wouldn't want to go by, if someone did a walkout basement, they got thirty-six hundred or thirty-four hundred, whatever. Um, well, then they'd exceed the thousand, so I guess you know, that, if that's our max, but I'd say the bird's eye view, right? Because we don't really want two big buildings, right?
No, I don't think so.
So I think we gotta do, I think we gotta do the, the bird's eye. At least that's my opinion.
It, it might go back to the issue of the square footage of a lot also. You know, I mean, all this comes into play. It's not, this is a very complicated issue that you're trying to address. And I give you a huge amount of credit for listening to my baloney and, and considering anything I'm talking of as the enforcement person. But these are the things that have to be thought of ahead of time to make it an enforceable and work really smoothly for everybody.
So.
It's almost like, oh, sorry.
Going back a little bit, this, this would in our dimensional requirements, this would definitely be under multiple dwellings, correct?
Uh, no, two, single and two-family are not, don't trigger multiple family.
No, but a, a, an, an ADU in the spirit of it, how we're, how we're looking at it would, would be a multiple dwelling, right?
Well, I, I, I could actually argue either way. Because it's, our bylaw is very unclear as to what a two-family dwelling is. Uh, well, two-family is assumes attached. So there again, if you have a two-family dwelling and somebody wants to put in an accessory dwelling unit, is it only of the owner's occupied section or of the whole footprint? You know, I, I know I'm getting to be a pain in the ass and I'm sorry. But these are the things that you're going to put our building officials, zoning enforcement officer through when they're trying to calculate whether or not they can allow a permit.
Right.
Sorry.
So it, in the okay, we have, we have two-family dwellings. We got that, that's your basic.
By, by right, by right in most conditions.
So for argument's sake, let's just say our ADU is detached. Okay?
Yeah.
That's, that's what it is by our definitions and the ADU is attacked, is detached. Um, we would put that into multiple dwelling in our dimensional requirements, correct?
I'm not sure. Uh, it, it depends on the language you use for the definition of accessory dwelling unit. You can, you'll capture there whether, how it should be looked at under your definition, I think. You know, you can say if there's already a two-family and somebody wants to have an accessory dwelling unit under the owner occupied side. You know, you can say that it, in by definition, it's not considered a multiple, you know, a dwelling lot, but it just has to meet the requirement of a two-family with, uh, you know.
If they had two buildings, how is it not multiple dwellings?
Well, I, I, I'm not disagreeing with you. I, I in fact don't think it should be, but that, that's my, I'm not trying to inflict my personal, uh, inflict my personal opinion on this. Uh, if you want it to be a secondary building, fine. But what if you have that two-family and you want to have yet a third family detached? You know, I think, or maybe you want an accessory dwelling unit of six hundred feet or a thousand feet or less within each one of those duplexes. You follow me? It gets very complicated and convoluted.
I wo- I wouldn't want any more buildings besides the two-family for.
Yeah, I, I.
Me, for me personally, I'm just throwing it out there.
You, you need to, you need to look at your definition and be very clear on how you deal with that part.
It's in there. It can only be a single-family dwelling to have an ADU.
All right, very good. Yeah, I got you. Well, I didn't realize that. Again, I haven't looked at any of this book. I'm sorry that I didn't have it in advance.
Did you get a copy of that? We emailed it to you a little bit ago.
Oh, I, I don't know. I've been, I haven't looked at my emails since we started talking. Um, I, I, I see I have emails. I'll be happy to look at that. Maybe I should stop talking until your next meeting.
Well, uh, you know what? We're gonna get to, we're gonna get you guys over the uh, STR also so we can get that.
Storage.
Um, get that out. Okay.
I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to come to one of your meetings because that, you know, and discuss all these issues. I'm sorry that I'm not there tonight. I'm I'm dealing with something where I can't, I can't come to your meeting, I'm afraid.
You, you're here. You're here.
Well, yeah, I, I can't come in person. Let me put it that way.
Who said we want you to come in person?
You got it. I get it, man. I wouldn't want to be there. I noticed, I, by the way, man, I noticed that all the others are there, but you're not. Maybe they didn't want you there.
They voted for me to stay on Zoom.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Okay, um.
Well, again, I'll, I'll, I'll review all this and I'll get back to you.
Okay, and, and we'll get to the STR, um. Remember that one, we, we had so many issues that we were talking about that we just put it aside for a little bit while, while we're thinking about it. I am not, and just so you know, um, when that one comes up, I defer myself out of chair and somebody else takes it. I, I am only a a uh, person in the audience then, so.
I, I, I understand and good, good for you. That, that's probably the best thing you can do.
Because I saw what happened in Great Barrington. That was ridiculous, but I, I can't believe they, they went that far and then, then she says, oh, I don't like the STR next door to me. That's why I'm doing this. That was something else.
Yeah.
So what, why I'm asking, I mean, I'm not sure if we need to about the dimensional requirements, um, once you bump to a multiple dwelling, you're, you go from twenty-five percent to twenty percent of lot coverage. Um, I don't know if we just want to leave that, if we want to uh, make it an ex, I, I don't know. Is, did you guys look at that when you were drafting this at all? Did you care?
We just cared that it met the lot coverage requirements and setback requirements. It had to meet those or, again, as a by right site plan review.
Need, how many square feet is a one acre lot? Forty thousand?
Forty-three five.
Forty-three, yeah, yeah. Correct, forty-three.
Five sixty.
Yeah.
But a two-family with water and sewers allowed to be half that.
Right, but even right, so even you do half of that.
They're going to exceed the coverage, right?
It's, I mean, even that's four thousand, forty-two hundred square feet on a, on a half acre lot. That's going to be funny. That's going to be funny big enough for, yeah, I don't think we want any of this done, anything smaller than a half acre lot. So yeah, that's, that's a mute point. Forget I even talked.
Actually, we'll put a limit on it, even though it was our twenty lot, twenty thousand square foot. I think we put a limit of nothing less than fifteen thousand square feet. Again, factoring that.
Right, right.
Depending on what your lot coverage is going to be, percentages.
Okay.
Well, if we could get some of Gordon's comments, if we just sent that to him, maybe he could get some thoughts on it and.
Yep.
I think we picked up a bunch of stuff here today and.
I think so. I think we're moving right along. Um, yeah, and if, uh, I think that forty percent under by right and then special permit over forty percent, not exceeding a thousand.
I like that.
That's special permit planning board, right?
Yes, planning board, yep. Um, let's see. Other zoning amendments. We're going to have, next meeting, we're having our uh public hearing for split zones and
Storage.
Storage. Okay. Have any feedback on the storage? I, I love how we put a deadline in that. That's going to be that's going to be good. Well, um, but anyway, Gordon, when I ran into him the other day, he brought up an interesting one. What about lots that happen to be split perpendicular the other way?
Do we have any?
Well, the thing is, once that happens, your frontage is always off the road. But once you go past that line, you're into that next zone anyway. So it's really dictated. I suppose there's some that are, might be I don't.
We haven't run into, we haven't run into one yet, I don't think.
Uh, no.
In a different zone, but that's, we're talking about this as a piece of property that's owned by a singular person or company.
Yeah.
It's got into a split zone here.
I mean, there's, trying to see where I am here. Let's see.
Cause it, isn't it a moot point because they're going off the road frontage? So it doesn't matter?
Yeah, there's a few on East Street. There's a few on East Street. There's the industrial.
That's not me.
Is that your stomach growling there, Matt?
That's not me. That sounds like a dog.
Not sure how we would do that. Or if it even is an issue. Because you're usually.
It's off the frontage. So what do we, we just deal with that property that's on the?
Yeah. I'm looking up off Graylock Street, the uh, industrial zone section.
Oh.
A little bit of that split. I mean, what do you? It's off the front. Yeah, we're going off the frontage.
Industrial businesses, the mills, so to speak.
Yeah.
If they wanted to encroach
The other way.
Laterally into their R twenty zone.
Exactly.
Just gives them an avenue to at least pursue it.
Yeah, I mean, and up, up by my house, Matt, there's that issue too, but it's all residential. It doesn't, it only changes from three three acres to our twenty, not, but once you cross the line, then you're in a whole different uh, lot setup.
Yeah.
You know? That wouldn't, I think just the industrial spots is where it might pose some issue. But then, then we're still we're still covered by a special permit.
Right. I think that's something we deal with once it comes up.
I lost everybody's hands here. Um, there we are. Okay. I knew Gordon was there. That's why I was looking for the hands. What are your thoughts on this one, Gordon?
Uh, I'm not going to give you any thoughts. Oh, I was going to ask, could you also forward me, if you have not already, all the other proposals so I can take a look at them before your meeting next and I'd love to be able to read them first. So I'm not guessing what's might be in there. That's all. But thank you. And I, and I'm going to leave. Yes, it was my dog growling. She wants to go outside.
Take care of her.
Let's go outside. I'm gonna, I'm gonna get out of here and uh, not talk again, but thank you so much for what you're doing. I appreciate it. And um, if I can review all that, I will probably be in. And, um, if I can review all that, I will probably be in person at your next meeting.
Great.
Thank, thank you very much, sir. I appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you. Um, yeah, we got, we have some sections up off Summer Street where it splits. R twenty, R thirty. But they're, they're, those are minimal changes.
Residential anyway.
They're residential.
Areas that you're worried about is business to residential, industrial.
Indust, I think really industrial to the residential would be the. But it's still covered under.
But it's still covered?
Under special permit. So I, I. I think we're okay there.
Does it affect the definition? Probably not really, right?
What's that again?
Does it affect any of our definitions? Cuz we we've referred to the frontage use.
Yeah.
This should be the contiguous piece to the left and right. What this argument is.
Think it matters. I'm not as concerned about that, tell you the truth. I think that needs to stay. You need to delineate somehow.
Yep, yep. It's the way it is for now, right?
I think it's a great, uh, bylaw.
Yeah, I do too. You you know, I'm thinking even, okay. Up by my house, Matt, you go. Up the hill. And just before my house, it goes from R twenty to to C R conservation. Residential. So, so you jump, so say. Say you had a lot that was on that edge that was split. It goes from requiring you. You'd have frontage on both. Say you had two hundred feet of frontage, a hundred and twenty-five is in. Our twenty. Seventy-five is in C R. You have enough frontage for C R, but you don't wanna break out. Three acres of a building. Lot. As C R requires. So you do a special permit? To, so you just go twenty. To twenty thousand square feet. Would this bylaw apply to that?
You'd have, but you'd have enough frontage for either lot, for either, uh, zone?
All the primary lot. In your application.
You'd see, both would have frontage.
Both would have frontage.
Both would have.
Got the primary, the majority frontage.
Say they're a hundred and a hundred.
Restrictive or the least restrictive?
Depending how you're looking at it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
He's here with the business zone that encroaches into a residential.
Yes.
It's the encroachment. You're changing the use to be the. The less restrictive really, right?
Yeah.
Business into the residential. So almost it'd be the same thing here. So if you wanna encroach.
You would still do a special permit.
You still, yeah, you still have to, yeah, you definitely have to do a special permit.
Is that, you think about it, you're right on the edge of a, a dense neighborhood.
Yeah.
Taking out a three acre lot just wouldn't really make sense.
And so residential use for residential use.
It is.
Is that a business to residential or industrial? I think you're okay with it.
Yeah, R B, and then most of them parallel. R B parallels, pretty much. Okay. Um.
That's for the meeting on the, uh.
Thirteenth? Any other topic, uh? You have any other topics?
We're not, we're not dealing with the short term rentals today.
Not today.
We ought to wait till, make sure it appears here.
Yeah, we'll make.
I'd like the accessory to go to town meeting, though.
I would too.
accessory going, yeah.
I hope so. Oh, I don't think we have it. That's gonna be so controversial.
No.
You know, we need to have a real.
Both of them there.
Yeah.
Yep.
You guys always think it's gonna be controversial. Look at our last one. Everything was smooth as could be.
We had, we, we had different people. Don't forget, now we're dealing with open town meeting. So you're gonna have a lot of emotional crowd that's gonna be able to get very stirred up very easily. They won't, they won't, they don't watch the sausage getting made, so they're, they're gonna get emotional. When. When people tell them they're gonna have short term rentals next to their house having. Giant cake parties, they're gonna say, we don't want that.
I think. I've heard both sides, to be honest with you, on that one.
You, you have.
I have.
But, but a lot of people out there about short term rentals, all they've read is the horror stories that just hear in.
No, but I mean, like, when we do that bylaw, I think it's going to be a little better on both sides.
Well. You're gonna have the innkeepers come out like in Lennox.
Yeah, they are.
In Lennox, um, you know, and that's just funny, they.
Yeah, I know. It's frozen towns, I guess.
I think this first. Town meeting, open town meeting. Is gonna show us all. We, we, we could be wrong. But, uh.
Well, if you have a strong moderator, it'll be.
We don't.
Well, we have to make.
We don't. We have the one we have.
Well, there's town elections coming up, maybe. I don't know. We'll see.
Thank, thanks, Conrad, for all, for all the work.
No, he's not, we're not done yet, Matt. Stay with us. What do you got?
Probably. Very soon.
Well, I mean, they're going on it, so now they're. It's in.
I.
It's, it's hap, they pulled a permit. They pulled a demo permit on it.
They can pull a permit.
I'd like to see a shovel hit the ground.
Not yet? Okay.
Oh.
Yep.
Oh, well, that's because, yes.
You don't know about promises?
Yeah.
I get it. I understand.
Which goes back to my original question.
I thought it was in.
There's a trigger there. There's some certain things that'll happen.
Be two years.
It was two years.
I thought it was around February or March that it expired.
I thought. I'm not sure. I thought it was in December. You could look at it.
But there's been, there also has been amendments. So I believe it would go from the last amendment, I'm hoping.
Oh, it would be, yeah.
Yeah. Last amendment. Right?
Didn't we extend it?
Extended it for six.
We had to change something. He, with the. Remember he came in and talked about the, the small, the one other building that was gonna be small and.
Yeah.
Did, did away with the motel across the street. There was that big change.
The machine shop is supposed to have.
Machine shop.
And they might be in for another amendment. With the machine shop, so.
Because the, uh. It's gonna go in there. They're gone.
Yeah, they might.
So this would require a modification of this special permit. For any more apartments, perhaps?
Yeah.
Starbucks, we just talked about that before you guys got here. Starbucks. The. I guess the building commissioner made sure that they're gonna turn that sign off.
Good. Great, great.
Not at night, but.
When they're not.
And they're closed.
Good.
As your code goes, you're allowed one freestanding sign and one building sign. They've got one freestanding sign. On the side of the back.
Oh.
So I guess the sign in the back was shown on the plan. And the question comes in, did they actually get a sign permit? For two wall signs and the.
Believe so.
I don't believe so either.
Cuz it, cuz it wouldn't be allowed.
Oh, it wouldn't have been allowed.
So where do you go with that?
Uh, our enforcement officer, Matt.
Yeah.
Matt. Yep.
Yeah.
That's what we talked about before too, that, yeah.
Cuz even though it's illustrated on the site plan approval, it's, I mean, that was a, it was a building elevation. If they got a. Building permit, obviously, to do the site work in the building, but then you gotta get a separate permit for the signs.
That counts for sign permits and see if we, in error, gave that.
And it certainly was never illuminated on the sign.
And if we didn't, then it's an illegal sign for Matt to get. On that.
Another thing is, uh, the Graylock mill sold for three point seven million.
Yeah.
It was an internal, uh, conveyance. I guess there might have been some discussion about. They've lost their license for the marijuana cultivation. As an indoor grow originally.
I think so.
That's what I heard. You see, I heard it's gonna reapply again.
Right, well, that's where I'm going with this. Are they working off an existing license that was granted by? By you guys first and then selectmen second? Or? Licenses expired, they would have to reapply?
I believe they'd have to reapply through, that was a long time ago.
This, yeah, it was, it was sold to this zip box.
Yeah.
Right.
Box, the nice.
Original owner had the paper on it.
Yep.
And then took it back.
Right. So if, if there are any impressions that they already have an existing marijuana, marijuana indoor grow license.
Thought I read in this, in the, when they were talking about how it changed hands. From Lennox development to, or from Lee Development to Lennox Development. Uh, that, uh, Spartis or said that he was gonna have to reapply through the article in the paper.
Okay, and then it goes back to discussion at the master plan. Licenses are available, how many the town want to tolerate? If they gotta go through this whole thing all over again, is that, uh?
You can't change it, right?
Can't change it.
Until town meeting, if we do wanna change it.
Didn't, weren't we limited on sales and not?
We did.
We did.
Yeah, we, there, there's limits on each, each license.
Have you looked at the, the marijuana bylaw?
I've looked at every form.
Yeah, but there's.
It's fourteen alone.
What's that?
Fourteen alone.
Right.
Combined with cultivation, retail.
Production, retail, and there's, and there's even transportation was a permit in there. So our, our thought process was. Only two. You could only have two retail.
Two retail, yeah.
Okay, so. But a company could come in and if they did. The, um, beginning to end. They could probably eat up seven or eight of those permits. So that's why we put it out at fourteen, so that there would be some room for somebody else. Um, but. Yes, we're having, a- actually, I hear it's not the cultivation problem, it's the production problem. It's why the smell's happening.
We're, we're gonna make everybody a little more sensitive.
Yeah.
Cuz there was one on one too.
Yeah, but how, we're, we're almost out of them, right?
I thought we were already out of them.
I think we're, we're there full.
We're pretty full.
Oh.
Yeah, so.
It doesn't seem. Yes.
Except if this one expired.
This one might be one that's still, but depends what they have. They might only have a cultivation, not cultivation and production. So on, cuz like. Uh. Ork and Hearth, I think they have. Two or three right there because they have. The retail. Cultivation and production. Yeah.
I mean, it is confused. Yeah.
People ask me all the time, how, how many licenses are taken? I never, I never can tell them how to answer that question. I almost think it's, uh, our town attorney's the only one that might know. Or the select board.
And I, I, I think we're very close to full. I, and like I, I answered that one, Matt, that all of our retail licenses are full.
Well, yeah.
You can't get another retail license, so. This field key just keeps on going with them.
Last thing, I was wondering, uh, at our last meeting, we had that, uh. Presentation on the three hundred stockage road. And the various things that could be done with that. And I know, uh, mentioned one point about. You know, affordable housing. I tend to agree, that's, that's not the place to put affordable housing. Affordable housing meaning subsidized and otherwise. Um, is there any? Interest in? Taking some of that acreage? The town selling it off to a developer to build regular market rate housing? Maybe I shouldn't say market rate. Some form of calculation that would allow. Houses or house lots to be. Created. Affordably, so somebody could buy a younger. Younger people go in and buy a lot. And. Three hundred thousand dollar house instead of a, you know, six hundred thousand dollar McMansion. Is there any way that the town? Would have any kind of an appetite for that?
I don't think that's this board.
Well, is, when we first got that property, wasn't that, didn't it come from a mill? It was a gift?
Yeah.
And I think there was a lot of stipulations that came along with it. It was supposed to be used for town use only.
Oh, really?
Pretty sure.
Wow.
Yeah. But you know, uh, Conrad, you bring up an interesting point. Um, I think Lennox has ventured into the affordable housing issue.
Right.
Think doing. A affordable market rate. Dictated would be difficult because the. The business model would be tough for anybody. What, what makes the affordable housing? Style house. Affordable is the state help. But to do, but to do. When you get into, that's why you see usually the market rate ones are a little bit bigger. It costs a little more because you can actually do them. Economically, you, you can make money, you can. It's a decent business model.
It just, it, it seems like there's not enough land in Lee. For already come in and build housing, housing. If the town already owns this land. And they will decide. Five acres, I have a hundred seventy-one. Maybe down closer to where the Via Franco, where that sewer line is, on that back field. Town is getting nothing for it now. If the town came up with a proposal with a developer to come in. Basically, the town would give the developer the land, cuz they gotta put all the infrastructure. Town roads, subdivision control. Sewer, water, underground, all that stuff. If the land acquisition. Line item was eliminated. Basically, that would get a developer in there to build. Affordable, how, when I say affordable, it's not even affordable, it's, it's market rate. Yet not subsidized.
Yeah.
Okay, the town is giving up the land to collateralize it for the infrastructure. And then. You've got fifteen and twenty house. Then you get your tax rate there, get families in, get kids in there.
I'm sure if we could do.
And will.
I mean, cuz we're, it, it just, it just.
It's public.
But it screams of, of possible image of corruption.
Yeah.
Depending on what builder came in. Oh, look at the town's giving this builder the, the land. Uh, what connections are there?
Unless you bid it out, like you.
Or I think an option. Would be affordable, that the town gets into the, who offers it up for someone to do affordable housing. That would be totally legit.
But affordable housing, like, like we talked, talked about last week? You know, if. It's affordable where, you know, it's a subsidized. Uh, housing voucher type program where people don't even have cars and they gotta have public transportation? Yeah, I, I don't want the answer. I'm just saying, this is a. Land to do this other recreational uses for. If there's a segment of it that could be built for, again, bringing some sort of a.
Who knows?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You look at the Aroldi building and. The, where the bullseye was. You put something up there, you could very easily do a, a. At least a forty unit.
Yeah.
If the town. Would, I think that would be a viable option right there for the town.
I wasn't even sure if, you know, you're, you're, you're housing all of this stuff.
Everybody is, yeah.
Little Berkshire housing, if you presented that kind of theory to them. Structure something that.
Have to see if we can even do that with that plant there if we wanna.
It might be encumbered, it might be, uh, might be restricted. Encumbered, title encumbered.
I had a conversation with Chris, but. Uh. Oh. All these developments. Ideas we have, the municipal building, uh, when you take the survey, they ask, would you be willing to pay an extra three percent, six percent taxes?
Yeah.
Same thing, the. Who's gonna pay for this piece of property to develop? I mean, I think the town people only can go so far. Uh, then they're gonna slow, slam the brakes up. So, uh, it's nice to talk it, but, uh, it's gonna be a long range plan.
Just, yeah, the, well, since I've been here, all this discussion, we're about trying to find ways of creating housing, be it accessory dwelling units, be it, uh. Get more housing units, get more families in, bring. Get more housing units, get more families in, bring affordable housing for our kids to stay here, that kind of thing. I don't know what the answer is, it just.
It doesn't guarantee they're gonna stay here. They come back here.
Yeah.
That's, that's how the, you see the, the demographics. They come back, they leave, they go off, have their fun in the cities. They wanna raise a family, they come back to the Berkshires.
I came back.
A lot of people don't leave. Right, Dave?
Sure.
Me too. I like it. I, I've always liked it here.
I can't beat it.
It's a beautiful town.
All right, anything else, anyone? Hey.
My committee is gonna have some sort of a, when I say my committee, I haven't been able to go. But I keep in touch with the committee, Community Preservation Act. I think in March, they're going to have meetings. Uh, uh, they want public insight, but I don't know the date, so I'll find out when I hear more of them.
Um.
I thought, oh, everybody did really well, even this evening. It's, it's. It's, it's, these things are. Realize how difficult some of these things are to understand and to try to figure out the best possible solution.
You know, they know.
For the.
Do we have any, did we, we don't have any minutes, Beth? Oh, I'm sorry. Better now?
Yeah, there's a really bad. Schools.
Oh, perfect.
Um.
Okay, all right, so we'll catch up on those. Um, I did notice. We're way behind on the online. Um, minutes.
They're fixing that.
Okay. Yeah. Yep.
And now the, the, it's here in town hall to keep all those. Computers going. I mean, it's, it's strange. You'd think it would be. Way better than what it is.
Is that a poker dice going on in here or what?
Maybe.
Okay, uh, Matt, what do you, anything in, in there? Are you asleep yet?
Just, yeah, barely, barely awake. Um, no, I appreciate all the uh, hard work with Conrad and. Peter that they put in and all the good thoughts, where I just get to show up and criticize everything.
It's so nice to uh, really have something that's, that's so close to done when we. Start. I mean, it's so, it's so, so close to a finished product. We all have, all we have to do is tweak it a little bit. Boy, we like tweaking it, I know that.
I do think, or I, I do, I do think Gordon brought up some very valid points that. Um. We have to think about, although I think we do have a lot of them covered. Um, but I like the special permit idea and that uh, give us a little more control, but yeah, no, it's all good. All heading in the right direction.
Exactly. Okay, any other motions?
I'll make.
So move. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you in two weeks.